Good evening. Clock on the wall says it's six, so it's time for the June meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. And I will officially call the meeting to order. We need a roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here.
Agenda for this evening includes two public hearings and a decision item. Staff, anything, anything in the way of a change? We're good to go? Okay? I need a motion to approve.
I'm motion to approve the agenda for June 5th.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Minutes from the April meeting, we did not have a meeting in May, so April 3rd was our last meeting. Any additions, corrections, or whatever? Gentlemen, Ms. Akers, we good? Okay? Need a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2019.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Thank you. And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, without further ado, we have, our first public hearing is PUD 06-3, Specific Site Plan for Homestead Village. Before I have our clerk read the information, just a little bit of information on how we do our public hearings. We have a presentation by the applicant, then we have a staff report, then we open the public hearing to comments from attendees. Please limit yourself to three minutes, if you would. Once we're finished with that, we'll see if there's any written input. Then the planning commissioners will discuss and vote. So, read the goodies there.
This is case number PUD 06-3, Specific Site Plan Number Four, on an application filed by AB Partners LLC, care of David Montgomery, Pickrell, Schaefer, and Ebling, 2700 Kettering Tower, 40 North Main Street, Dayton, Ohio 45423. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 130-unit apartment complex on 6.7 acres. The property is located on the southeast corner of Park Overlook Drive and Grange Hall Road. The property is further described as Book One, Page 11, part of parcel 67 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do want to bring up a potential issue and kind of explore whether or not this is something that we want to table prior to staff presenting. I know that this was on the agenda two months ago, and we had quite a turnout in the audience. My concern is that the neighboring properties were impacted by the recent tornadoes, and I don't know what the legal analysis is, if we have the ability to table this until the next meeting, so that we can give those neighboring properties a chance to provide their input.
So, the zoning code requires Planning Commission to hold its public hearing within 45 days of the filing of the application. As you've already stated, it's been longer than that, but that was at the request of the applicant to table it the last meeting. So, the public hearing should be held tonight. Planning Commission could table it after the public hearing, but of course, that would require running through all of this again. I'll also say, there's going to be a public hearing before City Council, and the neighboring property owners will have the opportunity to appear at that as well. So, if they have something that they don't have the opportunity to be heard tonight, they could come then. Does that help?
That's helpful. Thank you.
Are there three readings? Are there three readings for City Council?
Yes, there will be three readings.
So, they have multiple times to be able to...
Only one public hearing.
Okay.
One reading. Oh, it's a specific site plan. There will only be one reading.
Okay. Thanks.
But that reading will be a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. So, and as I'm sure you all know, in this particular case, we are advisory to City Council, so City Council actually passes on this. So, if there are folks listening or watching tonight, you will have a chance, there will be a public hearing when it goes to City Council, presuming it does go to City Council.
Right. And also, I think your clerk might be asking for a motion to take it off the table. Is that correct?
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for keeping us legal and shipshape in Bristol fashion. I do need a motion to untable.
Mr. Chair, since we are unable to continue the tabling, I am moving to untable this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a second.
A second, and we'll do this by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, now it's time for presentation by the applicant. Step right up, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Dave Montgomery, with Pickrell, Schaefer, and Ebling, 2700 Kettering Tower, Dayton, Ohio 45423. I was the applicant on behalf of AB Partners, and I'm here this evening with several representatives of AB Partners and Homestead America, who is the developer for the project and the operator. With me, I have Dave Anderson, who is with AB Partners and Homestead America. I also have Steve Lyle with the Ranky Group, and I have Bill Andrews with Andrews Architecture. So, I know staff has gone into a fair amount of detail in their staff reports, so we'll try to keep our comments relatively short this evening. We have had an opportunity to review the staff report, in addition to the proposed conditions of approval. As a general statement, the applicant does not have any concerns with either. And again, so as not to be redundant or steal staff's thunder, I just wanted to highlight a couple points for your consideration as you deliberate on the application this evening. First and foremost, I do want to thank staff. This application took a fair amount of time to get before you, which is one of the reasons why it was initially tabled. We had a variety of issues to work through as it related to site design and some of the city's requirements, so I appreciate staff, the city engineer, planning staff to work through those with us, including the city manager. So, again, the application is for 130 unit, excuse me, 130 unit senior living, independent senior living facility. That is identified as a retirement community under the definition of your zoning code. As indicated in the advertisement, we're talking about 6.7 acres of a larger 12-acre parcel that's located on Park Overlook Drive. As you can see on the site plan up there, the roundabout is the first roundabout as you come in off of Grange Hall Road. So, coming in east off of Grange Hall Road, and that's our property immediately southeast of that turnabout. So, the project, again, is for 130 units of senior independent living. This is an age-restricted community. It will be at minimum 35, I'm sorry, 55 years and older. There is a project very similar to this in the Westerville area outside of Columbus, and you'll hear some comments and comparisons to that project. I don't want to classify this as an identical project, because obviously, we're in a different community, but this is a well-researched and well-received style project up in the Columbus area. Of the 130 units, we're talking of approximately 120 being single unit, meaning single-bedroom style units, with 25, the remaining 25 being double-bedroom apartments. And so, with this, and one of the things that we've worked through with staff is really what the impact of this type of project, both with the age restriction and the number of single units, has under the zoning code, and as it relates to the intensity of the project on the surrounding areas. I'd also point out that this project has sort of a town center component to it, so there will be a variety of amenities located on-site for the residents. Those are non-public amenities, and we're talking about things such as coffee bistro, hairdresser, some wellness services, some fitness facilities. So, those will be made available to the residents of the community in addition to their guests. But as a general statement, they are not open to the general public. So, with this, the design of the project meets the requirements of the zoning code. The setbacks exceed those required under the zoning code. The buffer zones are all being honored. The impact that this has on various services, sewer water are obviously located in the immediate area. There's no anticipated impact on police, or fire, or EMS services, more so than any other style of residential development that would be coming forward. As indicated in the staff report, there is an extensive landscape plan that's being proposed. There are some additional conditions for further enhancement of that landscape plan. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant has reviewed those and is agreeable to adding some additional landscaping, as staff has indicated. What I would like to do, because I'm sure you would like to hear more from the end-user of this project than me, I'm going to have Dave Anderson with AB Partners come up here and talk, tell you a little bit about the project, and then when he's done, we're going to have the architect, Bill Andrews, speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dave Anderson. I'm with AB Partners and Homestead America. AB Partners is the development company, and Homestead America is the operator. My address is 369 East Livingston Avenue in Columbus, 43215. This project, 130 units, is based off a sister property that we have in Columbus in Westerville called Hampton Woods. We've owned and operated that project for about, I don't know, 10 years. We've had great success with it. It's been very well-received by the community, high occupancy, very low turnover, and, you know, whereas in conventional apartments, you might see 50% turnover, we're somewhere about 18% turnover. It's an older product that we have wanted to, we call it a Hampton Woods 2.0, just to create a new Hampton Woods. We're building another one of these in Grove City, Ohio, which is just south of Columbus, and it's designed for 55 and over 130 units. We have so much intel on what we had at Hampton Woods that we feel very strong that we're building the right product in the right location. We've had a number of focus groups, talking about the exterior, the amenities, unit sizes, interior finishes, just really trying to pinpoint exactly what the end-user wants. The amenity space that you see on the diagram, there's, it's a U shape, all the units are in the U shape, in three-story, and that amenity space is about 8,000 square feet. Inside that amenity space, it's designed like a town center. That's the village of the community. Within that town center, there's a billiards room, a bistro, a place to order groceries, so it has a feeling like you're in a grocery store, has a meditation room, a grandkid's room, salon, fitness center. It really is a post office. It really is designed, so when you're walking around, it's going to feel like you're inside, I mean, you're in a village. So, the idea here is that you live in your unit, but you spend your days inside the amenity space. Again, we've had a property at Hampton Woods in Columbus that we've owned for over 10 years. Average occupancy is 98% year-over-year. Any questions?
Oh, we'll have questions for you later.
So, is it Bill?
It's Bill's turn.
Good evening. Bill Andrews, Andrews Architects, 6X31 Commerce Parkway, Dublin, Ohio. Pleased to be here this evening. Appreciate your time and consideration. And as you see from the rendering sketch, we're excited about a wonderful project we hope to bring to your community. As Dave outlined, it's got the right components for the active elder population. You can see by me standing here, I have probably a little bit to say about that group of folks. The average age of the resident is going to be somewhere in the, around the mid-70s, so some folks younger and some folks older. Of course, what we all want in our lives, what we all want for our family, for our parents, is to be able to age in place, and this is really what this community is set to do, is allow that person to, regardless of their ability to ambulate or interact, is to have a safe, comfortable home, and then a place that they can walk down the hall, come down to the village square, and interact with their, probably their neighbors they've seen in the community for a number of years. Architecturally, it's a traditional look, and this is important, and when you're doing focus sessions with certain populations, we can all appreciate, an older population might identify with her certain style and character of architecture, where a younger population might have a different thing. And this is important to that age group, something that looks, something they can identify with, looks a bit like home, has traditional roof lines and appointments. This is why you see what you see. We've, I think, done a lot to help take what is a good-sized building and break it into component areas with some of the architectural features you see today. In the staff report, there was a request for the additional brick on some sides and what is referred to as the rear of the building, and we are in agreement with those conditions too, along with some landscaping. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our brief presentation, Mr. Chairman. So, we do thank you for your time, and obviously, we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 06-3. It's Specific Site Plan Number Four of that PUD, the Homestead Village. As the applicant has stated, they're looking to build 130-unit retirement community/senior apartment on about a little over 6 and 1/2 acres. Project's located in northern Beaver Creek on Park Overlook Drive. It's on the south side of Park Overlook Drive, about 600 feet, 650 feet east of the intersection of Park Overlook and Grange Hall Road. The entire PUD, it's kind of, you can see it by this box here, it's better highlighted in the zoning map, is 29, or a little over, or a little less than 29 acres. And what we're talking about is the 6.7 acres down here in the southeast corner of the park, of the PUD, so it's south of Park Overlook and east of the roundabout. What they're proposing to do is have a driveway into the site, and we'll show, I'll show you that in a few minutes. As you can see, the site is mostly vacant, you know, throughout the site, and especially in the front of the, or the northern portion of the site, there's some trees in the center, it's more grasslands and some scrub trees, and then along the southern property line abutting the residential properties to the south, there is some evergreen trees and some other scrub trees that help, you know, soften, buffer this property from the proposed project that we're reviewing this evening. Again, this project is within PUD 06-3, and in 2017, the southern portion of the property, south of Park Overlook, was amended to include a bunch of different uses, including a assisted living facility, independent living facilities, because originally, there was going to be 32 duplex units on the south side of Park Overlook. Originally, the entire PUD was 64 duplex units, and then we rezoned the northern part for the existing Liberty Nursing Center, and then the south side stayed, and that was amended in 2017 to allow for a different assisted living. But as, among the uses, a member care facilities and retirement communities. And in our zoning code, retirement community is housing for the elderly in conformance with 42306B2 of the US Code, which basically states that age-restricted to 55 and up apartments, whether they, whether it's sold, or, whether it's rental, or condos or the like. So, what they're proposing this evening is allowed within the uses in this portion of the PUD. Now, seen here is the site plan. Again, there's one access point to the site, which is off of the roundabout. It's a two-way drive throughout the site, and you can either go left when you get in, or you can go right into the parking lot, but there is a two-way street that circumnavigates the entire building. And then there's also, this is a drop-off area, well, this is a drop-off area, and then there's also a bypass lane for the drop-off area, so that's what that was, or that, you can see that, that additional lane to the north. They do include a sidewalk connection to the existing sidewalk out on Park Overlook for pedestrian facilities, because this is in an area with a lot of amenities that is within walking distance, the mall, and the hospitals, and the, a lot of restaurants in the area, you know, within a mile walk. So, that is good that they encourage, you know, non-use of cars, because as they, as the applicant had pointed out, a lot of the people in the community actually don't have a car in comparable projects, looking at that property in Columbus. I believe that they stated it was something, it's a 40, between 40 and 43% of the residents don't have vehicles in that project, so they're anticipating that same thing here. So, to have that pedestrian facilities within near distance is an important amenity. They are doing a bit of grading throughout the site. This is actually grades up, so it's going to be a hill in front of the access drive, to sort of separate the access drive from the building, and that's good for noise, for people coming up and down the hill on the driveway. This is kind of a better, easier way to look at the, a lot of green space that they're proposing with this site, both inside the parking lot, in the interior, in the back of the building, and then around the entire site. They're proposing a building that is a little over 82,000 square feet. It's 244 feet long, 302 feet wide, and it's 35 feet to the, of height, which we measure at the midpoint of the pitched roof, and that's a gray asphalt pitched roof. Again, a majority of the building is going to be constructed out of this gray-tone cement board siding, so it's a hardy plank hard siding. And then they do show on the front corners of the building, as well as these sections of the building, a white brick, and then a white trim around the building, around the windows, and along the corners, and the fascia board, and other accent features such as the pillars in the main area. One thing that planning staff is recommending, do they have brick around the, on the first floor here on the front of the building? And what we're recommending is to create that same cap, so that there is four-sided architecture features, that they have that first-floor brick around the back ends of that building. This is going to be a different color, like a red brick. It's slightly different. It's kind of their community area, so it's, there's a slight different color to that. It's hard to see, but, you know, that's, it's a different feel to it. So, what we're proposing is these ends to the building have that brick, so it does, you know, wrap the whole, wrap and create a, you know, four corners of the building. They are proposing to expand the existing detention pond here to the south. This one, this pond here, you know, is for the Liberty Nursing to the north, and they're proposing to extend that pond. The existing house is still shown on here, so there's no plans to demolish that existing rental house at this time. And so, I just wanted to give you a perspective of where that house was and the driveway was. Seen here is the proposed landscape plan. As the applicant stated, and staff has pointed out, they do show a lot of landscaping throughout the site, both along the street, a good double row of six-foot pines on the rear of the property to help buffer this from the residential properties to the south, and then throughout the site, both in the landscape islands, around the perimeter of the building. But one thing, because it's a, it's a three-story building, we want to see more of these trees added along the perimeter of the building. I think that that will help soften the appearance, appearance of the building from Park Overlook Drive. So, I added a condition that they add these trees that I've shown in red, or very similar to it. It does, I mean, if they can't put it right there because there's a pipe sticking there, then they can move it a little bit. I just, I, so I made it ambiguous enough to where, you know, we want these trees there, but it doesn't exactly have to be at that location, so they can move it a few feet to north or south if there's gas lines, water lines, or the like. So, that is a condition, and as the applicant stated, that they're amenable to that condition. There's a few other conditions I wanted to point out. One is that, you know, they are showing this, this non-disturbed area here, and actually, because this project is going to require both impact fees and parkland dedication, or fees in lieu of parkland dedication, and running it through our Parks Director, you know, we're interested in this about an acre and a quarter here for them to dedicate. And the balance, because I think it comes out, though, to be, they'll be required to provide parkland of about two acres, so we'll take fees in lieu of the other 3/4 of an acre, based on the appraised value of the property. But we're looking to get that about 1 and 1/4 acres here and add it to the existing, because we've got a decent existing park to the east. But there is a condition that, you know, the area is to not be disturbed. We want that orange fencing up, so that they don't just start taking it out, and, you know, we end up inheriting a park with nothing but dirt and brass. We want to keep those trees intact. All the building mechanical equipment, because it's a pitched roof, obviously, they can, all the units are going to be on the ground, and we want to make sure that those are screened from all directions via landscaping. All the pole-mounted light fixtures be 16 feet tall, because there is residential, single-family residential properties to the south, and we don't want to have any kind of light spillover or light pollution that we've seen in other properties. And those lands, and any pole-mounted light fixtures need to be in actual landscape islands in the parking lot, so we don't have them stuck in the four corners of these, because, you know, they are, that tends to beat those up pretty quickly, and we see that that just doesn't look good after a few years of chipped-up parking and cars. I mean, it's not good for the cars either. Because of the residential properties to the south, and we want to limit the construction hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, those are for outdoor construction, so once they get on the roof, you know, that wouldn't preclude the plumbing or the electricians that go inside on a Sunday, but, but we don't want any grading, or roofing, or siding, or anything like that constructed outside of those hours. Again, impact fees and parkland dedication fees. They showed on their plans, a sign, a general location of a ground sign, but no details beyond that, so we added a condition, and it'd be limited to five feet tall, have the brick base or material similar to the brick used on the building, and it'd be 32 square feet per sign face, which is comparable to what Liberty Nursing has across the street. This is just to give you a highlight about the 1 and 1/4 acres that we'd be looking to have them dedicate alongside our existing parkland, which I have highlighted in green. So, it does, it's a good, it gives us some good frontage along Park Overlook to work with on this. Right now, it's just a preserve, it's not, it's an inactive, you know, passive park, but, you know, that just gives us good roadway access, in addition to what we have now. There's one condition that I wanted to add to the proposed resolution. I mentioned it to the applicant beforehand, I didn't have a problem with it. We talked about street lighting, to be put on three of the corners here, and they, and our engineer wanted to add that language, that they, they need to add street lighting, just the poles, because, you know, we're increasing the traffic to be going around that roundabout, and at night, you know, this can be a dark area if anybody's gone out there, so we want to add those streetlights out there. So, we, I want to add a condition, that street lighting shall be installed in existing roundabout as directed by the city engineer, and they've already worked through the details of that with our engineer, but I just want to make sure that that was concrete in there. But staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are several conditions in the resolution for your consideration. I don't have it in front of me, but I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
22 conditions. Okay, we've, we've heard from the applicant, and we've heard the staff report. Time for the opening of the public hearing. Are there folks here who would like to speak, either in favor, against, or simply ask questions? If you do, step right on up. Don't be shy. Nobody? Okay. Last chance. Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask our clerk if we had any written input. No written input. Okay, it's time for the planning commissioners to voice their opinions, and I'll start on my, I'll start with Ms. Akers, who is next Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, is going to change her name. She is getting married.
So, I have a couple, or a few questions for the applicant. Whichever you, whichever of you would like to come forward. One of my questions is, revolves around this driveway and the ingress and the egress, and I have a couple of concerns. My first question, I guess, is what kind of delivery trucks are we going to be having come in and out of this facility? And is there a docking area, or somewhere for deliveries to be dropped off?
There really are, besides FedEx and UPS, there really are no delivery services that will be, once, once we're constructed.
So, how does, how does a grocery store that's located within that facility work, then?
It's, it's a grocery facade, and so what we're trying to do is really create an opportunity for someone to feel like they're living in a village. And so, what it is, it's for Instacart, so we'll have
Okay.
... relationships with Instacart, but where you go in, and it feels, this room that you're in, which is open to the village, looks and feels like a grocery store. So, you have produce and the different, but you're just sitting at a computer ordering for Instacart, Instacart to come and deliver to you.
Okay. Well, that's an interesting concept. Okay. So, my next question is, I know that there was some statistics that were thrown out on the number of residents that actually drive. One of my questions is, and this may be more a question for the city, is there public transportation, or do you provide transporta, does your, I guess, operation provide transportation services for residents that
No.
... are unable to walk?
No. We really don't provide any services at all.
Okay.
It is apartments for seniors.
Okay.
And I want to clarify, I'm not sure I heard Dave speak, or Dave, or Bill. Our, our average parking is 80%, so 80% of our residents have a car.
Okay.
I think somebody, I heard 43, maybe. Not sure where that number came from, but it's 80% of it. And that's, that's an average over the past 10 years, taken from the sister property.
Okay. And then this is just kind of a simple question. I presume there will be elevators?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think that is all the questions I have for the applicant. Mr. Burkett, I have a couple of questions for you, though. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Will the evergreens and the shrub trees that you mentioned remain in addition to the pines?
There is that no-cut zone back here.
Okay, there is a no-cut zone back there.
I mean, it's not, I didn't, I didn't want that to be the sole screening buffer, because those, again, those, most of them aren't evergreen, so in the wintertime, they wouldn't provide it, but there is this no-cut zone that, also, that they're going to need to put the orange fencing around. fencing around, because I want to let that keep.
Perfect. And then my last question is, that detention pond that they want to expand, I guess I don't really know how this works. I presume that they have permission from that landowner there?
He's the seller of this property.
Okay. Perfect. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, sir.
I'll go to my right.
Yeah, might as well just keep it that way, right?
Yeah, I don't need my steps.
Do you have any issue with the, the overall design and the aesthetic of the building? I'm just going to be honest.
You know, we, I worked with them back and forth. They, they, this is an upgrade with what they proposed originally.
Okay.
You know, I think that having these sections, and it, and there is bump outs, it's not a flat wall, I mean, there is some relief on that, and I think that having that, along with that first row of brick and a lot of windows, I just think it, it does break up the building. It is a big building, and that's why I'm asking for the extra landscaping around the...
Well, I just, the siding looks, I know it's fiberboard, but it looks like traditional vinyl siding, at least from the proposed planning, and then when you put vinyl, literally vinyl shutters on top of that, I mean, and then line up windows one after another.
Right.
I, I feel like it's incongruent with what we've been building. I understand that we're trying to build something more traditional, but it doesn't fit in the area at all from a design aesthetic. I don't know, it just really concerns me that 10, 15 years, it's going to look even more dated than it will upon initial construction, so that's, that's concerning. It's 20, 25 years, and we don't need all these senior communities, there're going to be, going to be issues with reusing.
You're going to be one in 25 years.
Well, I know, but there's going to be less of us, so that's why.
Some of us already are.
Okay, I just wanted, but you're okay with the, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, it's something different. It's, I mean, it does, I mean, we have the pitched roof to help mesh what they, the Liberty Nursing's got the pitched roof, and so is the single-family residential in the back. We use multiple colors, and, you know, like I said, you've got the relief, so...
Okay.
I think adding the landscaping will help a lot compared to what this, this rendering shows.
Okay.
It'll reduce down the scale of the walls.
Do we need to worry about stubbing out that green space ahead of time, since we're potentially going to connect those two together?
You know, one of the conditions is, that they have to go through, they have to split that lot off. They'll have to get a subdivision, and one of the conditions of that will be that, as they're splitting that lot off, whatever they're not using has to be dedicated to the city.
But will they put a stub, like a driveway stub, so we can use that existing driveway that's going to come in, the driveway off to the west side there?
This is their private road. Oh, are you talking about easement?
Yeah, they're going to put a stub to connect that green space to the west there. If that makes sense. Or is there already a stub for the west?
We're going to require a cross-access easement along that eastern property line, or western property line, so that, you know, and plus, this portion actually, the reason I'm doing the access is because this portion is actually owned by the neighboring property, not them, so all, in order for them to have access, they're going to have to get an easement put on the plat.
Okay, gotcha. Or I'm sorry, I was actually talking about the parts of the east there, I'm sorry.
This is going to remain a passive area for now? I mean, we don't have any plans to develop that park. That's, that's, there is access from right here. You can see there's a small parking lot, and then there's walking trails through it, so this is, when the lofts two were done, they built a little parking lot that's open to the public, and you can park there and then walk through. We weren't really planning on expanding that or anything, or adding another parking lot in this area, you know? And it's going to be on a hill, actually, so we're trying not to, you can get there from the sidewalks on Park Overlook, though.
Last question I have, and I guess we don't have the engineer here, this might be a little bit of a sensitive one, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Roundabouts, they tend to challenge people in general, and as a known fact, our reaction time reduces as we age, so we don't have racecar drivers that are, that are older than 40 at this point. Is there a concern with the roundabout being directly across from the senior center?
You know, we have one across the street now. I know that that's more of a nursing, nursing home and recovery center.
Right, not really driving. This is more of a...
But I, I think it tends to slow people down. I mean, you'll tend, because if we didn't have that, this would be a raceway.
Well, I'm more worried about the actual proper use of the roundabouts. We get a lot of people that stop and turn on signals.
I think there's a learning curve with those. Once they get that down a few times, I think that, that, I mean, I guess that's more of a philosophical question beyond the scope of this applicant.
Well, the incident rate, I actually did look at the stats, it's actually pretty, a lot higher than you'd want to believe in roundabouts, based on age, actually at the lower and the higher end of age dispersion.
Right. I mean, it's already there, so, and that's the, that's the dedicated access point for this site, so, I mean, we don't want them to cut into this area and have a secondary access that would be, make it a lot more confusing, so...
All right. That's all the questions I had.
I don't have to duck.
I just had one more question for the applicant. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Burkett. What are the, what is the age, what are your requirements for age into the...
Fifty-five and over.
That is a minimum age is 55.
That's the minimum age.
Okay, perfect. That's all I had. Thank, that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I just have one, one question for staff. Mr. Burkett?
One question for you. Yes, sir.
So coming in on that access point, what was the city, did the city have any concern? I, I like how you added extra trees, another buffer on top of the existing buffer that's already there naturally. But these cars coming in at nighttime with their lights, they're pointed directly at that one house that's right there in that corner.
Right here.
The house is right, that's the property right there. Now, so I know they have, there's this house right there. So did the city have any concern with beefing that buffer up even more? Or I, I haven't been to the site, so...
There's existing trees there. It's hard, really hard to see on these aerials, but it's going to be about this area. And there's an existing thicket of trees, and a lot of, where the turn makes is kind of not on their property, but I can certainly have them add some additional pushes and shrubs and stuff in this location, so that when they are coming down the road, and have them planted at 24 inches, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I guess when I look at the landscape plan here, it does look like they use the natural buffer that's still there, and it kind of hugs the road as it curves.
Right.
So as long as that's going to stay, I guess, then shouldn't be much of them.
Yeah, I just hate to cut out existing, to put, cut existing mature trees out.
I wouldn't want that at all.
To put a 24-inch little shrub, so...
Okay.
Hi, I'm Steve Lyle from the Ranky Group, 959 Congress Park Drive. Your concern about the driveway coming in, one of the things about the drive is you come in low, and as you come up, it goes from, it goes up about eight feet as you're coming around, and that was the primary reason to have that long drive, because we had to have a gentle grade coming up to the site. So I guess what I'm saying is you're going to be going up, and that, those lights aren't going to be pointing right in, it's going to, we've got some elevation on the drive, so I think that it's probably not as much of a concern.
Okay, that works. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything further.
Thank you. I just had a quick question for staff, please. We appreciate your diligence. So, you know, 130 units, the applicant said about 80 percent of them have vehicles, again, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, so let's just say it's 100, 104 cars, right? Now, our standard is six handicap-accessible spots, they've gone with eight, it being a retirement community, the average age of 70-plus, should we have?
You can add more. You know, ADA required...
Four.
Four, and then you add our code, our code has some supplemental, which required a few more, and then they went above and beyond that. I mean...
I guess maybe it's a question for the applicant based on...
I mean, from a, from a, you can only add so many from a design standpoint if you're looking for points that are close to the building.
Right.
But you can designate it, all of them handicapped, but I mean, you can't change the location of it, but it's up to, it's up to you and the applicant. I wouldn't have a problem either way, but I think that, you know, they've gone above, I just want, they've gone above and beyond what we require, and we require above and beyond ADA.
Okay. Maybe for the applicant, then, just a quick question?
Yeah, thank you.
Please, go ahead.
We, we based our count, we did increase the count based on what we have in the sister property in Westerville.
Okay, that's all I was going to ask. It works, it seems to work fine there.
It works fine there, we don't have any issues there, so we just said, well, if we have eight works there, let's say we have eight work here.
Perfect. Good, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have a few questions for staff.
Yes, sir.
The, the trees that are going to go close to and next to the building, the one where you wanted to add trees, do you, did you specify a caliper for those?
When you, you plant those, it's typically a two-inch caliper. I mean, the rest of these will be two-inch.
They're not going to be five feet tall and take 20 years to get, to get up to the third floor?
I copied these trees, and those are going to be two, two-inch caliper trees.
Okay, so they'll be what, about 10 or 12 feet?
Yeah.
Give or take.
I mean, eight to 10.
Okay.
I mean, and they, they'll grow...
And not ash?
Not ash.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to, if you, if you are uncomfortable, I mean, you can specify two-inch caliper on your, on the condition if you really want to, but I wouldn't allow them to put in a little.
Right. Oh, I know, but let's, let's do belt and suspenders on this.
Sure.
From a, from a staff standpoint, I know we, we usually have traffic counts for, example, for a single-family, for a single-family plat, or for multi-family apartments. Do we have a, kind of a standard traffic count for a, all seniors apartment complex like this?
When, we...
Oh, please do.
The reason I wanted to come up and address it is because it's really minimal the impact. For a single-family, in a peak morning, you'd have about 0.77 trips per unit. For a townhome situation, you'd have about 0.44 trips per unit, and for elderly attached housing, which is probably pretty close to this one, it is 0.1, 0.06 trips a unit.
Okay.
So for 130 units, you'd have seven, eight trips for this product, and you'd have for about 100 trips for...
Right. And that's morning, that's morning rush hour.
Yeah. And it's similar in the evening, you know, 14 compared to 137.
Because I, I know that Park Overlook is used a lot by folks going to the base, because they're, they're going west on Park Overlook and then turning right onto Grange Hall to go up to Area B gate.
Right.
So that, I know it's fairly heavily traveled now.
Well, this would be a good...
But most of these folks aren't going to work every morning.
Right, and they, you know, their peak hour, while it's their peak, it's not really traditionally a peak like you might have somewhere else, yeah.
As long as y'all are up there, I had one or two questions for, before I get back to Mr. Burkett again, but as long as you're there. So this is strictly seniors apartments. It's not assisted living, it's not memory care, it is straight seniors apartments. There's, there's no dining room for, for, as in, as in you would have for an assisted living setup, there's no nursing care, no, no memory care, anything like that.
That's correct.
Strictly, okay, so it, it's essentially an apartment building restricted to seniors.
Age restricted.
Got it. Just wanted to make sure, because we've had them all here. Is there going to be a basement by chance?
No.
Okay. Do you have any kind of a reinforced area based on what happened last Monday?
Well, I'll let Bill answer to that.
Okay. You've got a lot of elderly folks in there, and a three-story building may end up being a one-story building based on what we saw happen last week.
Yes, and not to, just hopefully it doesn't sound patronizing, but the whole central Ohio is, their hearts are out to you folks, to this community. We were, it was, it was gripping to watch that news unfold last week, and I'm sure for you folks, you lived it, so we wish you all the best in your recovery. There's not a designated, like a vault or something for folks to go into, but as there's management in the building, and there's procedures to tell folks what to do in case of an emergency, because, again, whether we're elderly or whatever, it's, what do we do? The ground floor and the structure of this building is, quite frankly, very safe.
Okay.
And it'll just be through the, the folks and their guidance to say, what should I do in a case of emergency? That's really all we can provide.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I, I know that, that's going to come up with city council, so I just figured I'd give you a shot at it first. Mr. Burkett, I got a couple more for you.
Yes, sir.
The, the fire department doesn't have any problem with, with that long access road?
No, we routed it to them and they didn't.
In terms, in terms of turns and so forth for the fire department, particularly for fire engines.
Yeah, they never had any negative comments.
Okay. And the reason for that long parallel entry is the grade?
Yeah, you don't want it to be too slow, or steep, so you need to gradually get that out.
That's what low gear and cars are for. So, well, that, that answers that. And you all consider that the, the parking places, as shown, are adequate for both the residents, and I'm, I'm sure there's not going to be a lot of staff there.
Yeah, they said four.
Okay.
So it's not heavily staffed.
So y'all are comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't, this may be your answer, it may be the applicant's. I'm not sure which side of the building is the front. Is the front facing north towards Park Overlook, or is it facing south?
This perspective...
This is the front?
That faces Park Overlook.
Okay.
That's the drop-off, that's the, that main drop-off area, well, not in that site plan, here.
Okay.
You can see that's where those pillars are.
Okay. But that is actually an entrance in the back, too?
Correct.
Okay. Because there are not that many parking places in the front. I was, I was kind of expecting a portico, either in the front or the back, but obviously there is not.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the majority of parking's in the back, and this is kind of like what they call the town hall area, so that's going to be more the communal area, and then the bedrooms or units are...
And, and to preserve the, the existing trees and greenery along the south lot line that, that is common with the existing houses, you're not planning on berming, is that correct? Along that south lot line where all those trees are shown?
These are shown as areas to remain.
Okay.
So...
So you're, you don't, I know you can't, you can't berm without tearing up what's there already, so...
Right.
And y'all have determined that what's there is going to screen adequately.
You can see here's where they're grading. These are the grading marks.
Okay.
So they're staying out of that.
Okay. Want to make sure. Caught all my notes here. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right.
Second helping, is anyone?
I have another question.
Okay.
Based upon your parking question. I'm not very good at math, but if I multiply this 80 percent by the 130, that's 104 park, 104 cars in the parking lot, if 80 percent of the residents have parking, and we only have 100 off-street parking spaces.
With senior apartments are required to have, in general, one, two parking spaces for every three units, so you, two-thirds of 130 is 90. Or 86, and then four employees, so they're required to have 90, based on our code.
Right, but they're saying they're going to be at 80 percent capacity, so could[1699.88] Right, but they're saying they're going to be at 80% capacity, so could the applicant address that?
Yeah.
Please? That's why I got my calculator. I was like, I was over here doing longhand math.
You're really stuck without that calculator, aren't you?
I am. I truly am terrible at math.
I'm actually, I'm looking, I think I have confused the situation more than I needed to because I have in front of me the three rent rolls, certified rent rolls from the past three years, and each one of these is showing an average of 60%. So when I was thinking, you know, it's eight, it's, I mean, these are certified rent rolls, so they're 60% for the past three years on average.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
You're good?
That answers it. Thank you.
Okay. So that's right in there in the 60% that do have vehicles, except for the guys that have two or three. Okay, gentlemen, Ms. Akers, anything further that I need a motion? And we might want, just since I can't make the motion, I might want to suggest that we include, maybe not as a separate condition, but something about the caliper of the trees for the treescape around the building, since that is going to unharshen the look of that long, long building.
Soften.
I'm sorry?
Soften the look.
Unharshen. You've never heard of that before?
And then also, if we could add condition number three as written, or 23 as written up on that screen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 6-3, SSP number four. With the attached 22 conditions with an amendment on condition four to include two-inch caliper trees.
Surrounding the building?
Surrounding the building. Again, we can, I'm sure...
Minimum two-inch.
Yeah, minimum two-inch caliper trees. And then also add a 23rd condition that shall read, "Street lighting shall be installed at the existing roundabout on Park Overlook Drive as directed by the city engineer."
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Anything for the good of the order before we proceed. I'll ask our clerk to read the roll, please.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Sorry, we'll be looking forward to seeing it go up once it goes past city council. Our second public hearing tonight is Z19-1, and this is a zoning public hearing. And same rules apply as before?
This is case number Z19-1 on an application filed by Jonathan Speck, 3438 O'Hara Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. The application requests the rezoning of 1.203 acres of land from R-PUD residential plan unit development to an R1A one-family residential district. The property abuts 3438 O'Hara Drive to the north and is further described as Book Six, Page Three, Parcel 226 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I presume you're doing this for the applicant?
Yes. The applicant was unable to make it, so if you would allow me to proceed?
Please.
Okay. So the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 1.2 acres from an R-PUD to R1A one-family residential. The property under discussion is actually located within the Coy Home Set Estates PUD. The applicant purchased the property that is shown on that aerial photo in early 2019. Originally, it was part of a larger parcel of property that is currently still for sale. And the planning department staff actually did a survey record to allow for the creation of this lot. Normally, Planning Commission has to approve the creation of new lots, but it was deemed a non-buildable lot, so the applicant couldn't build on it until it was combined with his property. He actually lives here at 3438 O'Hara Drive. So his immediate plans are to combine both properties. So his property at 3438 O'Hara Drive is located in an R1A zoning district. This is located in R-PUD district. We're unable to combine the two because they have two separate zoning districts, so this is why we're here this evening, to be able to remove the R-PUD designation from this and change it to R1A, single-family residential. As you can see, the property is, it's just a wooded lot. He doesn't have any specific plans for it right now, other than to immediately combine it with his existing property on O'Hara Drive. Here is the zoning map. You can see that the entire, this is the Coy Home Set Estates PUD. This portion is PUD 8913, and then this here is Terra Estate, Section 13, which is zoned R1A, single-family residential. The existing land use plan designates this area as one low-density residential. It will continue to be low-density residential, and so it is, the request is consistent with the existing land use plan. Based on that analysis, staff does recommend approval of this request as outlined in the attached resolution. As you know, it's a straight zoning, so there are no conditions of approval, and I can answer any questions you have following the public hearing.
Thank you. Excellent report, as always. I'm just going to, well, first of all, it's, I almost forgot, it's a public hearing. Are there folks that would wish to speak for and against, or simply have questions? Please, could you, could you come up? No, don't, you don't have to do that. We don't bite. Come right on up front, and if you would, give us your name and your address, please, for the record, and ask away.
Okay. My name is Ginny Barber, and I live in 3426 O'Hara, right next to that property.
Okay.
And we were just concerned what he was going to do with the additional acreage space because we live next door to him, and we are planning to move soon. And we want to know if anybody, when they buy our house, if they do purchase, if there's any plans for anything, you know, going beyond that. Because it is, the property, really, I don't see what John wants to do with it. He told us that he's not going to do anything with it now, and I don't know if he has any definite plans about it. But from what we gather, no, it is, he doesn't. I mean, that would interfere with the rest of the property going down the street. But we were concerned just because if we do have someone that has interest in our home, if they would say, you know, is, do you have any interest in extending it? Because it's not really a, it's hard to describe, but I don't see what John wants, except that he wants to extend it for something. But I understand he has to get a permit that would flow with his present.
There's more to it than that, but...
Yeah. So that is just our concern. We just wanted to know if there is any idea or any concern or idea what he's going to do with it. So that was what we came to hear.
Okay, thank you. We'll be discussing that when the public hearing is over. Thank you. Others? Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input on this?
No, we did not.
We did not? Okay, who do I start with? Hi? I'm going to start to my left this time.
Mr. Chair, no questions.
Okay. Ms. Akers?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but I do, I think, kind of to help for clarification, and please, staff, correct me if I'm wrong. But Ms. Barber, to address your concerns, we are rezoning it to an R1A, which is a one-family residential, so I wouldn't anticipate any large businesses or anything going into that spacing there under the R1A code. Is that correct?
That's correct. The applicant has to combine this property with his existing property. So he's not able to build another house or anything like that. So the only thing that he can do on this property after he combines it, because right now he can do nothing with it, because there's a stipulation in the deed that says he is not allowed to build anything on it. Once it's combined, then the only thing he would be able to do would be to put any type of accessory uses, a swimming pool, a shed, a garage, he can fence the whole thing in. But no single-family home, no business enterprise, nothing like that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
What's the max size of that accessory structure he can build, just the...
The maximum accessory structure size that he is permitted total, because he already has a garage on his O'Hara property, is 50% of the footprint of his house. So the main floor, not the total square footage, just the footprint of the house. It would be allowed 50%. So if he has 2,000 square feet on that main floor, he'd be allowed 1,000 square feet of...
Which would be pretty small in 1.1 acres.
And his garage, his detached garage that he has already, I'm guessing, is, you know, at least 600 square feet. So, you know, we're talking a max of an additional, you know, 300, 400 square feet of shed.
And from what I've seen, when these kind of things happen, it's usually to buy the wooded land behind. So this property to the north actually doesn't purchase it and develop it all the way back.
And kind of one of the things, yeah, one of the things that we encourage when people, you know, they don't want anything to happen in their backyard, well, go ahead and buy it, you know? So that's what he's doing.
Mr. Height over here has done a very similar thing to this house, so yes. That's all. That's all I have.
No questions.
Well, Ms. Akers, I think you answered my question. Once they're combined, you can only have one house. And even if they weren't combined, it would be a flag lot, and we don't like flag lots. A flag lot is one where it's landlocked from a public street, and you have to have a little skinny driveway down one side to get to it. And we have historically turned down flag lots.
Yeah, if he...
Combined.
Yeah, if he decided to not combine them, for whatever reason, he can't build anything on it.
And he, and you can only have one accessory structure, other than your main house, is that...
No, we don't have that limit.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, it's a total square footage?
Yeah, it's strictly size, not...
I stand corrected. I thought it was a limit of one accessory structure beside your house. Good. Okay. Any other questions of staff or comments? Okay, I'll need a, I'll need a motion, and since this is a rezoning, no conditions.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve rezoning Z19-1.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a motion and a second, and we'll read the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. And we have one item left, and that is a decision item. It's a minor mod, dog dental.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case you had before you is PUD 95-5. It's a minor modification to the PUD that's out at the Beaver View area that encompasses the bowling alley and the building, actually, obviously, Dr. Dodd's office and then the professional offices that are along Beaver View Road. There's an existing building at 3223 Beaver View Drive that houses Dr. Dodd's office, and he's looking to do an addition to that in order to have a separate practice as well as a conference and teaching facility on the second floor of that addition. Nah, it's not where it is. Project's located, again, off of Beaver View Road, Beaver View Drive, which is just to the east of North Fairfield Road, approximately 500 feet. This is the bowling alley that's out there on the corner, and this is Dr. Dodd's office, the old skating rink that was out there many years ago. You can see that there's existing parking on the north side, as well as on the east side. And there's this angled parking, which is kind of an old-style parking. When they redid this parking lot several years ago, we had them add sidewalk. It's kind of covered by that blue line, but there's an existing sidewalk stub that ends right here. And should this application be approved, they're going to extend that sidewalk along the entire length of the building, get rid of these parking spots, and add green space in front of the building so make it look more in line with the professional buildings across the street, as well as what we look for in today's type of developments. You can see the existing building here. It's an all-Ephesus building. It's got a maroon cap and a maroon Ephesus base, and then like a beige wall and some black awnings. And then on the far end of the building, it's hard to see, but there is like a one-foot-tall parapet wall above the, well, one-foot entry feature above the existing parapet wall. This is the proposed site plan. Again, they're having, they're adding green space out in front of the building and extending that sidewalk. You can see here, they're proposing two access points. Right now, it's kind of a, just a free-for-all along that area. And so with this proposal, they would limit that down to two access points on Beaver View Road, Beaver View Drive, the battery's going out. And then one other access point here, which connects the existing parking lot for the bowling alley with the proposed parking lot with this. So you still get that ability to, you know, if you're here and you want to go, you don't have to go back out onto the main road, but you can cross between the properties easily. They're proposing to, what's an existing detention pond right now, they're going to cover that with a parking lot and actually do underground stormwater detention below the parking lot because, you know, parking's kind of a premium with this, with this project. The existing building, they're proposing to, you know, change the colors up a bit. Rather than the maroon and the beige, they're going with more earth tones with a darker beige, brownish, and then having a tan ends on each, either end of the building, and then the storefront windows on the addition. Again, the addition is going to be the two-story, and the rest of the building is going to remain the one-story. But they're going to extend that small one-foot lip down along the base, along the side of the building, just to give two end caps to the building and really enhance the architectural features. They are showing a good amount of landscaping along the Beaver View Road. And as with I did the other project, you know, I like to see when we have the base of a building, kind of a transition from the ground to the building. And so I added a condition that they add shrubs or bushes or just grasses, just some sort of smaller landscaping, rather than just trees and grass, you know, just to kind of break up that building. There is a condition that they add some landscaping along the front and side of the building. Staff does recommend approval. One thing I forgot to mention, there's parking. You know, if you added up these three businesses, essentially it's three businesses. It's two dentist's office and then the, then the second-story training seminar area. But it's Dr. Schalberg is going to be doing the additional, the second dentist business, and he's the sole user of the seminar area. So there's not going to be an overlap of businesses. That's why, you know, if you looked at these individually combined, they would have to have 130-plus parking spaces, and they're showing 100. But because that, there's not going to be an overlap of his dental office with him also doing the seminars, as I included a written narrative in the staff report that the applicant has given us about how they plan on doing the business. Staff's not really concerned about having that lack of parking, or appeared lack of parking, that, you know, they won't be running those businesses concurrently. So, you know, there's no need to overpark the area and prepare for the worst possible case scenario and park the entire site. So again, we do recommend approval of the applicant's request. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and if they want to go further into the business plans, I would encourage them to come up and encourage Planning Commission to ask them to come up and discuss that further. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to throw this open, folks. Speak up if you have questions.
I just have one question for Mr. Burkett.
I noticed that this was missing a standard condition that's usually written on, more normally in SSPs, but the perpetual maintenance of landscaping. Since you're requiring additional landscaping, does it make sense to add that as a recommendation?
Yeah, we can add that. That's just, yeah.
So at least you have, you know, if the landscaping goes to hell in a year, you can have them replace it?
Yeah, it would be in that PUD agreement. But, you know, we do, like, as you said, typically put it in a full resolution. But, you know, I don't have a problem adding that condition. It's just basically, just so you know, it just says that you'll maintain the landscaping perpetually.
Yeah, with three months, you know, you got 90 days to replace it if it gets diseased or...
Right.
Yeah, that's the only thing I have to say. Other than that, it looks great. That's all I have.
I have a logistical question. Where that stub is, there appears to be a parking spot at the bowling alley, sir?
Right here.
Yeah. Is that going to be an issue, perhaps?
It's at, the times that that would be full, you know, they're...
The dental office won't be operating.
I mean, they're full during the evenings, and if that were the only access point, you know, I'd have a concern. They have two on the outside. This is more of a, I don't want to say it. It's an access point of convenience when they can get through between the sites. I can't do anything about that parking lot. Unfortunately, it's a different owner, so I can't tell them to close it. And to go back any further, we'd be...
No.
That's where they're putting all the electrical transformers and stuff, and I just... So, I mean, if anything, we would close that down, which I don't want to do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. But that's sharp eye. Thanks.
Yeah, so I'll just ask, I'll ask you on behalf of the applicant. Was that requested to be put there for any specific reason, like additional act? I just can't see the bowling alley, be happy with a bunch of people coming through their lot to cut to the back or for some reason.
Right now, it's a free-for-all. I mean, right now, there is nothing there.
No, no, absolutely, I agree. I didn't know if there was a specific reason that somebody put it there, or if it was just the way, or the pen fell on the paper, and it, nah, might as well do that.
I didn't ask for it specifically. That's what the plans were shown, and I don't have a problem with it. Actually, I like to encourage people to cross between properties without using our main roads whenever possible. That's why, I mean, I prefer to have it there.
Okay. Yeah, the applicant, you're welcome.
Ryan Lieber, ALT Architecture. First, I wanted to thank members of Planning Commission for the help on the piano school. That project really turned out nicely, and again, had some site constraints and really turned into an interesting piece of architecture for the community. And here we have the same challenges. We're really, quite frankly, we battered around... challenges, we're really, quite frankly, we, we batted around whether it was even going to be willing, whether it was going to be worth doing in addition because of the site constraints, the detention issues, a lot, there's going to be quite an investment in the site, just to bring that up, but, but currently, on the south side, there is a sort of a pass-through at the end of those diagonal parking, and then again, as Randy had indicated, because it's such a free-for-all along Beaver View at the, at the, the north end there, there's, there's access, if you want to call it that, through that area, so at least we're trying to minimize that, but the one challenge that we were running into is that the, currently there's a transformer, because the, you can't drive around the back of the building currently, the, Dr. Dodd's building, we are going to have to relocate that transformer and actually probably change the service from single-phase to three-phase as part of that, so not only the detention issues, but the, the utility issues are going to come up as part of this as well, so we were just really trying to preserve what is kind of there already, and then as, as Randy had indicated, part of the, the configuration of that parking on that side was, again, trying to get as much parking as we could within, within the constraints of the lot. As I understand it, currently, it's less to do with people from Dr. Dodd's lot going on to the, to the bowling alley, it's actually the fact that Dr. Dodd allows people to come on to his lot, and that, that also goes for the chamber offices across the street, so a lot of people share that lot, and he's still good with, with that, so if it came down to some kind of an arrangement on that one space, I think they'd be agreeable to whatever was, was decided.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I got nothing else.
I think, putting on my historian hat here for just a second, I think the reason for the, the quote "free-for-all" between the two parking lots is that was the, the roller rink, and people would come in and drop the kids off at the roller rink, and they'd go bowling, and so the, the lots were never really partitioned off, but I'm all in favor of having a, a cross-access like that, because it really does save a lot of potential accidents from people zipping out into the street and making another left turn.
And I did want to add, to make sure that was on the record, I, I really appreciate the approach that staff has taken on this project, because we, we had several discussions with Randy and the team about this, and I, I really commend them on their approach to, especially because the, the owners are willing to, and are committed to cleaning up Beaver View and that entire frontage, we really appreciated the common sense approach on the parking counts and, and some of the other side lot requirements and some of those things, I really feel like that's what the PUD process is about, and especially this being our home for ALT architecture as well, it's, it's nice to, to know that our, our home community has that kind of approach to projects, so.
Thank you, we, we are well aware that we are blessed with a good staff, they keep us out of trouble on a regular basis. Just one, one more question for, for Randy, and that is, given the parking situation there, if sometime in the far distant future, if the use of this building were to change, do we have a way to go back and require more parking, or a cross-access agreement with neighboring properties?
Yeah, I mean, we can add a condition, I didn't already, about a certificate of use compliance, and say, any different, any other client, we've done that in other things, where any other client needs to get a certificate of use compliance, and we could, at least take a look at how we can ameliorate any.
Right, I, I recall that, that we've had, we've had situations similar to this, and this just protects the city from, from having something that would be very non-conforming in terms of, of parking.
Right.
People don't like to have to drive around looking for a parking place.
Right, and I, I imagine what the, the size of investment they're making in this building, they'll be there for quite a while.
Well, I certainly hope so. Anything further, gentlemen, Ms. Akers? No? Okay, then I, I would like a, a motion, if you would, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve CPUD 95-5, mod 519, with the attached seven conditions as written, and adding two additional conditions, the first one being condition number eight, that will read, "Perpetual maintenance of landscaping shall be provided, and any dead or diseased material shall be removed and replaced with similar types, species, and sizes as originally installed, within three months, weather permitting." And then the ninth condition being conditional.
Certificate of use.
Certificate of use.
Right.
And any wording that may have previously come to that in other.
Ms. Gillow will know exactly how to put that in.
Right, it would just be required that they submit and get a certificate of use compliance for any different tenants, or any new tenants.
So that, whatever.
Right.
I've got a boilerplate condition that.
It's illegal, in fact.
Right, will sound really good on it.
I recall a certain, a certain large used car lot that we had put a previous condition to cut a street through if it ever failed, if the, if it ever came back for redevelopment, and it did two years later, so, that's kind of in the back of my head. Okay, I have a motion? I have a second, thank you. And let us read the, the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries five zero, and gentlemen, we're looking forward to a shiny, new-looking building and cleaning up that parking along there.
I want to say it's warm gray, we told we were doing warm gray.
Warm gray, okay.
Not gray-gray.
Warm gray it is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And we are, 717.